Community Development Human Services Committee Meeting. We cannot officially start our meeting just yet, just because we have a small technical difficulty that we're working through, but we can do our presentations. We also are hearing from two appointees for the Invest Atlanta Board. We actually voted on these two in our COC meeting a week ago, so we will not be voting on these two, but we would allow them the courtesy to be able to speak and tell us a little bit about themselves. So we will start there on our agenda. So first, we will hear from Ms. Audra Cunningham. If you don't mind coming up to the podium, telling us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the Invest Atlanta Board.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. My name is Audra Cunningham, and I serve as the Executive Vice President and Chief Administrative Officer of one of the nation's prominent African-American-owned real estate firms. I'm honored and humbled to stand before you today in consideration for the appointment to the Invest Atlanta Board of Directors. I'd like to share a little bit about my background and the passion that drives me. I moved to Atlanta from New London, Connecticut in 1993, seeking a more cultured and diverse city to raise my children. With little more than self-determination and unfamiliarity, I settled into Cab County. As I acclimated myself to Atlanta, I became enamored by the Atlanta's rich diversity and vibrant development. This inspired me to reside within the city limits, a dream I was able to realize in 2006 when I built my home in Washington Park directly across from the park. My vision was and remains to ensure that all community stakeholders' voices are heard and their needs considered in the evolution of this great city. That includes our youth, all residents, and the business community. My commitment to the community involvement is deeply rooted. I have served as HOA president in every neighborhood where I've owned a home and actively participated in my neighborhood planning unit. As a current Grant Park resident, I served as Vice President of the Grant Park Neighborhood Association, and I currently sit on the Zoo Atlanta Board. I also serve on the Midtown Alliance Board, Finance and Audit Committee, and the Georgia Chamber of Commerce as the Vice Chair of the Operations Council, and the Council for Quality Growth Executive Committee. These roles reflect my dedication to giving back to the city that has given so much to me and my family. Although I am now a real estate executive, my career journey began in telecommunications, where I spent 23 years in various operational leadership roles. This diverse background equips me with unique perspectives to contribute to Invest Atlanta's mission of advancing the city's global competitiveness, growing a strong economy, building vibrant communities, and increasing economic prosperity for all Atlantans. Thank you for this opportunity to serve our great city, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Councilmember Wes Moreland?
Yeah, no question over here. I'm just incredibly excited about your service on the Invest Atlanta Board. I'm grateful to call you a friend and look forward to all the great work that y'all are going to do in the years to come.
Well, I thank you, and these words were heartfelt, and I didn't want to just speak from the heart today, because sometimes I just get a little flustered when I'm excited about something, so I wanted to make sure I got my message across. Thank you for the opportunity.
And I just want to add that I'm honored and excited about serving alongside you on the Invest Atlanta Board and looking forward to all the great things we'll be able to do on the board together.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So colleagues, we can now log in, and we have a quorum. So I will officially call the Community Development Human Services Committee Meeting to order for Tuesday, February the 25th. I am Jason Winston, Chair of the Committee. I am joined by my colleagues to my far, far right, Councilmember Bakhtiari. To my right here is Councilmember Jason Dozier. To my left, we have Councilmembers Wes Moreland, Boone, and Norwood. This does constitute a quorum, so I will make a motion to adopt the agenda. We have a second by Councilmember Bakhtiari. If you could please open the vote.
One moment. The system is still building up. Can we take this as a voice vote?
So, Councilmember Dozier, how do you vote? Councilmember Boone, Councilmember Wes Moreland.
The vote is closed. The agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. At this time, I will make a motion to approve the minutes. There was a second by Councilmember Bakhtiari, Councilmember Dozier, Norwood, Boone, and Wes Moreland.
The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
Thank you. Colleagues, you've had opportunities to weigh in on our 2025 Community Development Human Services Goals and Objectives for 2025. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the goals and objectives for this year. We have a second by Councilmember Bakhtiari, Councilmember Dozier, Councilmember Norwood, Councilmember Wes Moreland, Councilmember Boone. That was an eye I heard there.
The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. The 2025 goals and objectives have been adopted.
Thank you. This does take us to the public comment section of our agenda. We do have one speaker. Ms. Henry Jordan, I'll just remind you, you have three minutes.
Get out to the spirit of God, everyone that's here. Beware lest any man spoil you through philosophy and vain deceit. After the physician of men, after the rudiment of the world, and not after Christ, Colossians 2nd chapter 8, 1. Spoil could also be rendered carry away from the truth by false teaching. Rudiments of the world are elementary religious teaching coming from the world system. The word of God created the earth and us to promote His glory. You have reared the Lord with your words yet, ye say? Wherein have we reared Him when ye say, "Everyone that doeth evil is good in the sight of the Lord, and He delighteth in them"? Or where is the God of judgment? Malachi 2nd chapter 17 verse. Your iniquity with cords refers to pulling a load of sin with a rope on a cart. James therefore believed in corruption, have blessed him, and don't believe in Jesus' way of blessing. For he that doeth wrong shall receive for the wrong which he had done. And there is no respective persons, Colossians 3rd chapter 25 verse. God can judge on the basis of works because He is impartial and because the law is immaterial. But curse be the deceiver which hath in his flock a male, envoweth, and his sacrifices unto the Lord a corrupt thing. Why am I a great king? Said the Lord of hosts, and my name is dreadful among the heathen. Malachi 1st chapter 14 verse. Purity is mandatory for those officiating at the sacrifice. If a priest approaches having his uncleanness upon him, his soul, that soul shall be cut off from my presence. I seek to be holy for Christ because His word is holy. We need Christ's direction, His purity in us, to help people obey Jesus and forsake sin. Sin brings destruction because God promised it, not because I promised it, because Christ made us to glorify Him, and that should be our desire, not to glorify man. Thank you and obey Jesus.
Thank you. This does conclude the public comment section of our agenda. Colleagues, this takes us to the presentation section of agenda. However, we do have two appointees here for communications, and if you allow, no objections, we'd like to go ahead and take those two items.
Item number 1, 25C 0021, a communication from Tanya Greer, County Clerk, to the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, submitting the appointment of Mr. Chris Koppenhaver to serve as a member of the Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Thank you. Is Mr. Chris Koppenhaver here? If you don't mind coming up to the podium, telling us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on this committee.
Hi, and thank you for having me. I'm Chris Koppenhaver. I'm a Senior Director in the Site Selection and Industrial Brokerage Services Department at Cushman &amp; Wakefield. We're an international, global real estate and consulting firm. I'm actively involved in site selection projects and representing companies, owners, and investment in the state of Georgia for manufacturing operations and some redevelopment throughout the city of Atlanta in Fulton Industrial, specifically where I've served on the Community Zoning Board for the past six years. I am a current resident of Ansley Park and next to the Beltline and enjoy using it with my kids and wife and look forward to being further involved in it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from colleagues? We have a motion to approve by Wes Moreland, a second by Bakhtiari. Are we allowed? Can we open the vote? All right, we'll be taking an electronic vote here.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays.
Sorry to keep you in suspense there, but we appreciate your service. Thank you.
That would take us to item number 31 under held, 25C 0017, a communication from Council President Doug Shipman, appoint Mr. Leo Bjorklund to serve as a member of the Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Thank you for having me.
No, thank you for being here.
My name is Leo Bjorklund. I'm a CPA and a senior consultant at Deloitte Consulting, provide management consulting services for finance organizations, but that's not really why I'm here today. I think today I started to think about, you know, really what are the values that I want to be known for and really become a part of my life? And one of those was community. I think that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, but to me, it means your surroundings, your friends, and the support system that really comes with that. And I think the past five years, I've lived right on the Beltline in Fourth Ward, and I think it's really enabled a lifestyle that you really can't get in many other cities. And I think that's been able, enabled me to be close to my friends, my hobbies, you know, whatever it is, but that's what community is to me. And so when I reached out, I started to learn a little bit more about what the Beltline does, I realized it's much more than just community. It's about economic development. It's about giving opportunities for, you know, those that might be a little bit less fortunate to give them affordable housing. It promotes art and amazing culture in our community, and it just gives so much to the city of Atlanta. So when I found this opportunity and reached out to President Shipman, I was really excited when he got back to me and gave me this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to the next two years to really close out the last five years of the Tax Allocation District and see where the future of the Beltline is. So thank you for the consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bjorklund. Any questions, comments from colleagues? We got motion to approve by Wes Moreland, second by Dozier. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
This does take us back to the presentation section of our agenda. Colleagues, Mr. Zeph, who is the other Invest Atlanta appointee, is running a little behind, so we'll hear from him later in the meeting, but we will go ahead and hear from Commissioner Lennon from the Grants and Community Development Quarterly Update.
Good afternoon. I thank you for having me. Chair Winston and CDHS Councilmembers, I am Deborah Lennon, Commissioner for the Department of Grants and Community Development, and I am joined by Genevieve Jones, right behind me, who serves as our Director for the Office of Entitlement and Competitive Compliance. This slide is always our first slide. It's our department's statement. We are DGCD, doing good in our community, grounded in service, committed to moving Atlanta forward, and dedicated to excellence. The Department of Grants and Community Development focuses on the following items, I'm sorry, four HUD entitlement funds, Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, Home Investment Partnership Program, referred to as the Home Program, Emergency Solutions Grants, ESG, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, HOPWA, Section 8 Moderate Rehab Program, which is a project-based rental assistance program. And we assist other City of Atlanta departments with submitting proper applications for competitive grants, in addition to submitting our own applications for competitive grants, and we are still closing out HUD's Recovery Funds, also known as NSP. The next two slides just highlight the priorities for those four entitlement funds, and so you've had before you several times, the CDBG priorities and ESG priorities, the HOPWA priorities and Home priorities, and then we get to the meat of my updates. Because this is DGCD's first quarterly update before CDHS for 2025, I've included the comprehensive numbers for 2024, as well as the balances paid to date for 2025. Now, I've presented like this to you all before, and I know that you can't read that, so you should have received a different version of this, where it's a lot more legible and you could go through every line to see how much we paid to whom as it relates to CDBG funds. But for 2024, the City of Atlanta through DGCD paid our sub-receipients and other expenses totaling $15,856,422 in 2024. Through February 20th of this year, we have paid reimbursements for CDBG totaling $301,264.37. For HOPWA, 2024 total payments were $28,219,139.80, and then through February 20th of this year, we have paid reimbursements totaling $2,841,183.17. For ESG, in 2024, we paid reimbursements totaling $1,022,346.26, and then through February 20th of this year, we have paid $59,052.19. For the Home Program in 2024, we paid reimbursements totaling $5,518,997.76, and then through February 20th of this year, we paid $989,62.70. NSP, the ever-elusive NSP, we are still working to close out this program. We paid last year $909,966.85, and we have not made any payments this year. We are awaiting additional guidance from HUD, and communication with HUD has been somewhat limited, and we'll get into that in a moment. You'll notice that I usually do not provide updates on Section 8 payment, and I thought I would just remind you all as to why, considering that this is the first update of the year. Unlike the other four entitlement funds, the city actually receives our Section 8 funds for the year, so we're not fronting those payments. We have them, and we pay the Housing Assistance Program participants with those funds that are already on hand. We make payments for rent assistance, and we also make payments for utility assistance with those funds. Now, you'll likely recall that the city pays the reimbursement requests of all of our sub-receipients with general funds, and then we turn around and pay ourselves back with the HUD federal dollars by way of drawdowns. And so this is, this particular slide shows the numbers for 2024. So for instance, for CDBG grant year 2023, during all of calendar year 2024, the City of Atlanta drew down $3,534,351.91. And then another example, HOPWA for that same grant year, the city drew down $333,331.63. There's nothing next to Home Grant Year 2023, not because we've fully drawn it down, we absolutely have not, but because last year, the awardees had not actually started using the funds from that particular year. But if you go to the next slide, which is HUD Drawdowns Continued, you'll see, for instance, in that second set, there are no numbers next to CDBG Home, ESG, and HOPWA for 2018. In this instance, it's because every penny of those funds have in fact been drawn down. The total amount that we as the city drew down to pay ourselves back from those federal funds in 2024 was $46,154,490.37. For drawdowns in 2025, this current year, you'll have reflected on this slide the amounts that we have drawn down just in the first two months, and since then, we've actually drawn an additional $600,000 in CDBG for years 2021, 2022, and 2023, and we've drawn an additional $1 million down in HOPWA. So prior to those numbers that I just added, we have drawn down $11,305,712.19 of reimbursements to the city directly from the funds that we have previously paid with general funds. This slide reflects where we are for each of the years of HUD entitlement funding that we still have. So for instance, FY17, the city was allocated $6,613,822. We have drawn every penny of CDBG 17 down. The same for ESG and HOPWA 17, but we have not fully drawn down Home 17. Of the $1.5 million we were awarded or allocated, we still have 1.1. Home funds for 17 have not yet expired, and so you'll see the same reflected for 18. We've drawn everything down except for Home. For 19, we've drawn everything down except for about $2,000 in CDBG, and then 1.9 was awarded for Home, and we have not drawn 1.7. And then you'll see FY20, and then the next slide shows 21, 22, 23, and 24. This is the point where I would typically say, have no fear. Just because we haven't drawn it down doesn't mean that the funds are in jeopardy. We ensure you that the funds are being timely drawn and that our funds will not be recaptured. Today, I can say, have no fear. We ensure you that we are complying with the scope of our executed contracts, that we are providing services to the residents as indicated, that we are doing everything that we have contracted to do with HUD. I cannot however say, have no fear the funds won't be recaptured in light of the current political climate. We do not. In light of the current political climate, we do not know exactly what will happen from day to day with funds. But we are doing our parts and we are pushing forward to continue serving our residents and timely reimbursing the reimbursement requests as submitted from all of our sub-receipients. The next steps. Uh, about this time of the year, we start anticipating the next allocation from HUD. How much will the City of Atlanta receive, uh, from the federal government for our CDBG Home, ESG and HOPWA? So typically, March, April, May, we get those numbers. We then release a Notice of Funding Availability to the general public, and we provide training, we release the application, we let them know what's required to submit proper applications, what the timelines are, and what makes a good application. We then receive those applications, we review the applications and we award. We send those, uh, well, we make recommendations for awards, we send those recommendations to Mayor's Office, and ultimately comes before council, and then you all have the power to approve. We're not sure what that process will look like this year. We're uncertain how much, if anything, will be allocated. There is, as you all know, a lot of uncertainty, but we are still prepared to push forward and to serve our residents. And in anticipation of things not going as they have normally gone, we are, uh, being very data-informed and using the data, the data that we have been collecting over the years to redirect our funds to the areas that prove to be most needful. And again, we're being very specific about using existing data to redirect those funds, uh, so as to prepare ourselves as best as we can for what may come. And then lastly on here, I have the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan that is required from HUD, and that's, that's been presented to you all before, at least the process, we're wrapping up that process. Once the consolidated plan is drafted, uh, we will certainly bring it before you all, and there will be opportunity for the public to engage, because what is a plan about how to use funds without hearing how the public thinks those funds should be utilized? And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you. Um, we'll start with questions from councilmembers, uh, Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you Commissioner for your presentation. I'm curious, um, what you, we are hearing from our grant recipients, um, as they're undoubtedly very nervous about this time? So, who are we hearing from, if anyone, and then what are we telling them?
Well, you know, we always hear from the HOPWA. Uh, we always hear from our HOPWA project sponsors. We do have staff who are specifically engaging with the actual residents. We also hear from, uh, our CDBG Home, ESG. Everyone is anxious, everyone has, uh, very specific questions for us. Usually the questions are, will I be reimbursed? And there was, of course, a period of time where funds were frozen and no one was reimbursed. And then, uh, I can't say that the funds were unfrozen. I just know that we now have access to the system to request those funds. They are anxious about funding, current funding. They're very anxious about future funding, especially those who have awards over multiple years and those who provide services that are ongoing. And in the past, we've been able to encourage them to continue providing those services, because it's been HUD's practice to permit us to go back and pay for those services retroactively. But we don't know that we can do any of that. Um, you didn't ask this, but I will tell you who we're not hearing from, and that's HUD. So we don't really have firm answers. We don't have definitive answers for them, because we ourselves are not receiving definitive answers.
And what sort of conversations, if any, internally are happening if we never hear from HUD?
If we...
Or hear very bad news?
I, I think I can say this without speculation. I, I'm pretty sure they've been instructed not to speak with us at this point. So it's not coincidental that none of the grantees can reach HUD. Um, and so, what we are anticipating right now, through our advocacy agencies, through our professional agencies, for instance, National Community Development Association, we're just concerned about the reduction of funding in allocations. We're certainly concerned about that. What is abnormal is to be concerned about the elimination of funding that's already awarded. That's abnormal. Uh, especially because those funds have, have been allocated to the city, awarded to sub-receipients and being expended. And so to sweep funds that people have already used, surely would cause a lot of anxiety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner London, good to see you as always.
Thank you, sir.
Just to echo Councilwoman Westmoreland's line of questioning, uh, I too am deeply concerned about what's happening with Washington and how that's impacting the City of Atlanta. Uh, all the programs that you talked about this afternoon are all tied to federal grants. And, uh, one of the things I learned through our HOPWA Modernization Task Force work is that a lot of this funding isn't just City of Atlanta residents or just City of Atlanta institutions, it's metro-wide. And there's a lot of, uh, folks across the entire 28 county metro region that rely on the City of Atlanta to provide a lot of these services and support. And so, uh, less so much a question, but I guess more of a comment, the more we could kind of lean forward in the saddle and think about how we can leverage our partnership relationships with other jurisdictions and, uh, you know, have our folks in North Fulton or, uh, uh, Forest County, you know, reach out to their members of Congress, uh, and also see if there's opportunities to have the state or a regional partner kind of step in to, you know, provide additional support where we may not see it from Washington DC. I know we started to do that when we did the HOPWA modernization work, and we identified some additional funding to help try to plug some holes. Um, I hate to think that we might have to do that across all of our grant programs, or at least find ways to which to, uh, support those populations, those very vulnerable populations if those grant programs are no longer accessible. Uh, but the more proactive we could be now, the, the better position we are to navigate these really murky and choppy waters up ahead. So, that's a comment, that's a question, more of a comment, but just want the department and I know folks in administration probably listening as well, just to start thinking about our path forward, you know, with everything going on in Washington DC.
Yes, sir, agreed. And the administration is constantly asking for data from not just my department, but across, uh, all of our departments, and we are submitting that data. We are all advocating as best as we can. Um, and I certainly agree with you. I, I'm a realistic optimist. I'm optimistic that at some point, this pendulum will swing back, but I'm also living in the reality that right now, people are suffering. Yes, sir.
And, and I do think the HOPWA Modernization Task Force serves as a, a model of where to start in terms of bringing those sorts of stakeholders to the table, uh, coming up with us many different ways to try to address the problem. Uh, you know, something like CBGG, I'm sure we could bring DCA to the table, something like ESG, maybe a lot of our other housing folks. And, and so, just something that I'm going to continue to be concerned about. Um, and I appreciate the fact that y'all are thinking about it as well. Um, my only other question is with regards to the next round of NOFA, uh, assuming we do have money to actually disperse out. Um, I, I know I say it every year, but I'll reiterate, if y'all do like a flyer or, um, social media campaign or something, so that would make it easier for us to notify, uh, the organizations or the agencies in our districts to potentially apply, uh, that would be helpful. Uh, and then, just on that note, with the last NOFA process, when applicants are not selected, do they get feedback as to why they weren't selected?
Yes, sir. Uh, on the first note, we did share all of our documents last time with council. Uh, this time I'll be sure to send reminders and just make certain that you all are aware, because you get, you help us significantly in spreading the word. I will say, I'm not sure that this is the year that we want to encourage too many new applicants, uh, because we got to really just focus on the highest areas of need. On your second question, yes, it is, um, proper to inform those who are both awarded and those who are not, those who are denied. We, we made some mistakes last year. We sent information out via email, uh, didn't necessarily follow up to make sure that those same points of contact, who were the points of contact at the beginning of the NOFA process were the same points at the end of the NOFA process. Uh, we had some who were not awarded, request appeals. And while we are not required to implement an appeals process, we embrace transparency. And so there was a little delay in some of the appeals process. We have changed up our processes. Uh, Director Jones, who's present behind me, is actually in charge of that. She has revamped a lot of what we did last year in hopes that we'll be able to implement a better system this year. And we've also instituted a checks and balances to make certain that we don't skip anyone and that there are no presumptions that those who are awarded know and those who are not awarded, uh, who are not awarded are not just waiting endlessly anticipating when in fact the decision has been made. So we are going to do better this year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that. And if there's, uh, is there an opportunity for me to connect some of my District Four agencies with someone from your team to figure out what went wrong last year so that they can better prepare for this next round?
There is. I will tell you one system we implemented last year. Um, all of the agencies with whom we had existing relationships, as well as anyone who called or even mentioned CDBG, ESG, Home, HOPWA, uh, was added to a listserv. So all of those people will in fact receive notification about the pre-sessions, where we're going to say, if you're interested, even if you think you're interested, here's what is minimally required. If you don't do that, we're not even going to look at your applications, because we're not permitted to. Here's what makes for an even better application and then the best applications. There is a time period in which we're allowed to do that. And so to avoid the appearance of impropriety or to, to give any undue special treatment to anyone else, we want to do that strategically and for everyone at the same time. So if those persons you're thinking of, um, have applied in the past, they will receive information from us. But I would ask, sir, if you would just email their information to me, and we'll be doubly sure that they get that information.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Chair Yel.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Backyard.
Hey, Commissioner.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
So there's no need for me to beat a dead horse. Both of my colleagues, I mean, expressed our concerns. Obviously, we're very grateful for everything you're doing on the federal level, when we're actively watching what appears like the complete degradation of democracy, so I appreciate you. Um, I wanted to take this moment to actually commend you for a number of things, especially in my district. Thank you so much for all the supportive housing units that you are helping to develop. Um, thanks to you, in large part thanks to you. There will be over a hundred units of supportive housing on one corridor in my district to save a lot of lives. Um, and thank you so much for the work you've helped me do, uh, on a supportive housing development that has just been taken over by drug dealers. Um, bless you to whoever that was. Uh, thanks to you, we are going to turn around a location that has been a 30-year drug spot and location and gambling and prostitution. And you were the only person that listened to me and helped when we found out there was a loan that that owner had defaulted on. You were the only person. And thanks to you, we were able to catch things before they were too late. So I just wanted to commend you. I mean, there's a lot of big things on your plate right now, but it's those small pieces and that extra touch that really helps get these projects, maybe not as big as we would like, but gets these projects that make a difference across the finish line. So, thank you for using your office to save and impact a lot of lives. Very grateful to you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We always appreciate, um, the accolades. And I, I say it all the time, I get to stand in front of you and represent DGCD, but it's the team that is doing the work. I, I can direct inquiries to the right people, but my team is always responsive. And so I'm, I'm grateful to my deputy commissioner, to my directors, to our analysts, to our managers, uh, the folks who pulled up all of the data that you needed, and then I compiled it and sent it to you. And I, I'm the face at the meetings, but more importantly, I get to be the face of the folks who do the work and who are really committed to this work. So you are very welcome on behalf of the entire DGCD team.
Thank you to you and your team, um, because in three days, you were able to get me information I've been trying to chase down for six months. And in those three days, we're able to turn things around tremendously. So, thank you to you and your team, and thank you for always picking up my, my calls. And thank you for, just thank you to you and your team for listening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's our pleasure to serve.
Thank you, Councilmember Backyard. Um, we've also been joined by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond. Um, I just wanted to add a little color to, you know, what we heard today in, in that. And I think you described yourself as an optimist and the situation as being a little bit uneasy. I, I would describe it as terrifying. Um, we have a list of, of, of the grant recipients that you presented to us today, and I don't think that most people know the impact of what would happen if we are no longer to provide funds for a lot of these grant recipients. Uh, the type of services that, that are in jeopardy of, of going away. And I just, for everyone that doesn't understand what everyone does on this piece of paper, I just think it'd be great for you to take an opportunity to just describe some of the things that are at jeopardy right now, um, if HUD does not continue going through, you know, with these grant payments, uh, in 2025.
Absolutely. And certainly this is more than just people being uneasy, for sure. I, I said I was a realistic optimist, but I also acknowledge that people are suffering. Uh, the bulk of the funds we receive are earmarked for affordable housing, specifically for people who are defined by HUD as low to moderate income residents. I venture to say that those who may be outside of those definitions also have found that housing is no longer affordable. So now imagine if you make $47,000, $57,000, $67,000 a year, and the cost of housing continues to increase. And the only way you can keep your family house is with the assistance of some of these programs. Sometimes it looks like down payment assistance. Sometimes it looks like community development opportunities that help to reduce the costs. There have, for many years, been the misconception that these funds are for lazy people, people who don't work, people who want to handout. We worked really diligently to paint the picture that these funds are for firefighters and teachers and the folks who work for the City of Atlanta and other governments. Folks who are just wanting to feed their children. Folks who want their children to have access to programs that allow them to develop and access the American dream. Folks who just want to go to work. And so, our programs that are supported range from the ability to even contemplate affordable housing within the City of Atlanta, which is almost an oxymoron, moron these days, is affordable in housing. Why would that not just be natural? Uh, all the way to making sure children can have access to meals and that the elderly can have their roofs repaired, because they have such limited funding that they need to choose between food or repairing the hole in their ceilings. That they need to choose between air conditioning in the summer or heat in the winter and medication. These are people who worked their entire lives and now have gotten to the point where they should be relaxing, they should be reaping the benefits of paying into taxes and just enjoying the American freedoms that so many of us take for granted, but they can't. And then on top of that, the agencies that provide these services and don't work for a whole lot of money are now in jeopardy of losing the very funding that they use to pay their employees. Not just my team, who is also supported by these funds, but the people who are actually out here doing the work. So it's not about laziness, it's not about handouts, it's not about bootstraps. It's about basic survival and having access to the most basic requirements. And those funds are being played with like it's, it's a toy. Like somebody gets to the side one morning, these people are worthy of decency and these are not. And to just not even know where you're going to fall from day to day is causing severe anxiety.
Just to reiterate, Councilmember Backyard, we appreciate all the work you and your team are doing, um, in this time of, you know, uncertainty right now. And so, uh, thank you for everything you're doing. Um, I'm going to pass it back to Councilmember Backyard.
Sorry, you're almost free. I had, uh, just like one more quick question. Um, first, I wanted to say thank you so much for drawing attention to the stigmatization around poverty. It's something I'll never understand, when a majority of us love living a paycheck away from the street. Um, I know I am, I know folks think because I'm up here, that's not the case. I mean, y'all, every single one of my blazers is on a payment plan, so. Thank you so much for the work you're doing. But I also wanted to ask if you wouldn't mind looking at the Atlanta Children's Shelter. Um, it is one, it's a nonprofit that gets overlooked a lot, and they do a lot of, I've been able to refer to them quite a few families, uh, parents and children that don't have a place to go. And, um, I believe some of those would be eligible for HOPWA. So I just wanted to add, ask that nonprofit be added to the list and for us to take a look.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And, um, Councilmember Winston and Commissioner, thank you for drawing attention to the ripple effects of what's going to occur. I think a lot of times we look at what's right in front of us and this idea of like immediate gratification or immediate, uh, results, and we forget to play the tape all the way through, and especially years down the line. So the ripple effects of what are occurring now and the damage that's being done in less than 52 days will unfortunately affect us for many years. than 52 days will unfortunately affect us for many years to come. So I know that you all, you and your team don't have an easy job right now. And I just want to reiterate again, thank you.
Thank you. And we certainly thank you for your support.
All right. Any other questions, comments from colleagues, CNN? Thank you very much for your quarterly update and keep us updated on how we can help.
Absolutely.
Colleagues, it looks like we've been joined by Mr. Ken Zeph, Atlanta School Board Representative on the Invest Atlanta Board. So we did, just for a matter of just procedural, we, we voted on this in Committee on Counsel last week. However, this committee of purview had not heard from Mr. Zeph yet. So we just want to give him an opportunity to reintroduce himself, tell us a little bit about why he's interested in serving on the Invest Atlanta Board. Mr. Zeph.
Thank you all for this opportunity. It's a pleasure to be here before this august body once again. I'm going to put my reading glasses on. Great to see everybody. My name is Dr. Ken Zeph, and I serve as the District Three Representative on the Atlanta Board of Education. I'm honored to stand before you as a candidate for the Board of Directors of Invest Atlanta. I'm thankful to Dr. Clementeck for her leadership in preparing me for this role. I'm here as a community representative, a past superintendent of Fulton County Schools, and perhaps more importantly, the parent of three Atlanta public school students in the Midtown Cluster. Our family moved to Atlanta from Los Angeles about 12 years ago. So we have seen this community develop at a breathtaking pace. I'm thankful there's an organization like Invest Atlanta to foster economic growth that directly benefits our students and families. I believe APS is a key supporter of Invest Atlanta because they embrace the mission to support inclusive and sustainable development for our APS families. Invest Atlanta's commitment to inclusive growth resonates with my priorities as a member of the Atlanta Board of Education. By prioritizing projects that reduce economic disparities and drive investment into communities that have been historically overlooked, they are helping to create a more equitable Atlanta. Invest Atlanta is a key partner in ensuring that economic progress in our city translates into tangible benefits for our families. APS is a direct beneficiary of the good work of Invest Atlanta. If we get development right, students have the stability they need to be successful. Invest Atlanta's success means students are less likely to be transient because they have access to affordable housing. Invest Atlanta's success means student support structures are more effective because they live in vibrant communities that are interconnected and prosperous. I will be a voice for the school board to, to support this organization because I believe that under Invest Atlanta, when Invest Atlanta fulfills its promise, APS students will thrive. Invest Atlanta's work in supporting small businesses, attracting new industries, and developing workforce training programs ensures that our students, especially those from historically underserved communities, have access to meaningful career pathways right here in Atlanta. I'm eager to support your vision to make Invest Atlanta a vehicle of progress, unity, and opportunity for all. Thank you for the chance to be a part of this important work.
Thank you, Dr. Zeph. At this time, we'll hear from colleagues, Councilmember Backyard.
Dr. Zeph, so it's good to see you as always, despite your tardiness. He got me for not being here for his, for his, his vote. And so getting back, but no, you, one, have been, I'm so happy that you're on the school board. I was happy to support you and I'm happy to support you in this. So I know, I know that Dr. Clementeck doesn't invest in a lot of folks, and so I know that she sees, that she's grateful to have you and so are we. So thank you for your service and I move to approve after Councilmember Westmoren speaks.
Is this a, more voting?
No.
I didn't think so.
We, we voted.
Oh, that's right. We already did vote, my bad. Just trying to make up my absence.
No, just a couple of quick comments. I'm grateful for your service to APS's kids and you're my very favorite District Three successor. So thanks for all you do.
It's big shoes to fill. I appreciate the opportunity to, to work with you all and, and this, this partnership means so much. This is what people expect of government, is that we work together. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations. It's already been before our Communion Council, and then we'll be voting on it at full council on Monday. So we appreciate you and look forward to serving alongside you in Invest Atlanta.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next quarterly update presentation is from the Department of Parks and Recs. Commissioner Color.
Good afternoon, Chair Winston and members of CDHS. My name is Justin Cutler, Commissioner of Parks and Recreation. I'm excited to be here today. Well, on behalf of the 600 members of our department who share a commitment to this mission and vision on, on the board before you, we are excited to be here to celebrate the great work that we're doing to Invest Atlantis, to our Parks and Recreation Services, connect people through trails, parks, and programs, and grow our Parks and Recreation System for the benefit of all. And to that end, we have a presentation put together that highlights the work from about November to about the end of February. So I know March is right around the corner on Saturday if you're keeping track. Some of the things that we have done to engage community this last year include hosting our quarterly meeting, which we hosted last Wednesday. We had over 50 people come out to William Walker Recreation Center. We're going to be hosting these on a quarterly basis across 2025 called Commissioner Connections, and we'll be meeting with the community to talk about various Parks and Recreation-related issues. Since our meeting in November, we've also had city, 15 citywide different events and activities reaching over 3,000 neighbors. We opened a Gooder Grocery Store at William Walker Recreation Center. We created access at Standing Peachtree Green Space to the Chattahoochee River. We celebrated Miss Ruby Harper's Skate Park opening at Harper Park. We opened a esports lab at Martin Luther King Recreation Center. We celebrated a groundbreaking at Johnny White Golf Course. We celebrated a Skates Out program at CT Martin Recreation Center. And we partnered with Community Connections with Parent Liaisons at Dunbar Elementary School. And we had our third annual More Than a Trim at Pittman Park this last Monday. And I'm happy to announce today that we reached 10,000 followers on Instagram. We have arrived. Also, the team has been busy establishing a new joint use agreement with the City of Atlanta School District, APS. This joint use agreement will now provide after-school access to all the playgrounds and sports fields at no cost to those living in the neighborhood around the fields that can go down and play at the playground or play on a sports field, so as long as it's not permitted. And the school district will now have access to our swimming pools, our golf courses, discounts at our tennis centers, and our wonderful parks for cross-country meets, swim meets, and et cetera. So this is a great day. This should, this will also create more opportunity for young people to participate in sports and just to strengthen our collaboration between APS and the City of Atlanta. We also have our fourth annual Egg Extravaganza coming up at Westside Park. We have our Earth Day celebration, and this will be our third summer of Popsicles in the Park, where we'll be visiting all 12 council districts. Recently, we had Atlanta Citizen Review Board presented to Philip E. Smith, a community outreach specialist, gave him an award for the great work he does in reaching out to our communities to build relationships. So congratulations to Philip. Also, this summer, we have Camp Best Friends. Registration is happening now, so if you or somebody you know is looking for a great summer camp opportunity, this runs from June 9th to July 25th, from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. At many of our rec centers, we both have a youth program as well as a senior Camp Best Friends program. And this year, we have brought back the Lake Alatuna Experience in which kids can go up to Lake Alatuna for a whole week. All you have to be is 10 and older to participate in that activity, and it's a great opportunity to get outdoors and connect with nature. And our Camp Best Friends program will also have field trips and different activities throughout the week. And our theme this year is Under the Sea. We'll also have our, we had a winter break camp recently, last week, where we had over 329 young people participate, and we'll also be having our spring break camp coming up in April to make sure that, you know, not every kid can go someplace during spring break or winter break, and we want to make sure that they have something fun to do right in their neighborhood. And so we offer this as an opportunity to connect with our young people. Love Your Park, this is a big deal. We've done this now for two years, and last year we had 12 sites. This year, we had over 33 sites. Thank you to many of you council members that came out and supported us at various parks and public spaces throughout this last month of February. So far, we've had over 300 people. We, our goal was 1,000, but we had a rain out one weekend, and so that may have hampered our ability to reach 1,000. We've also had members of the Department of Watershed, they came out, they pulled a group together, but unfortunately, they weren't able to get, get together because of the rain. So they were supposed to be at Melvin Drive. And this week, tomorrow, the aim will be joining us at Oakland Cemetery, which is exciting to have city departments participate in Love Your Park. Also, we have different groups, oftentimes friends groups and fraternities and sororities from the HBCUs that are joining us onsite. We have different social clubs that come out. Thanks to Hands-on Atlanta for their work to promote this event online and help with registration, and a big thanks to Park Pride. We could not have done this without Park Pride, who coordinated the Tool Bank drop-offs, Mosch drop-offs in a lot of cases, worked with the friends and neighborhood groups to make this possible. So, and one of the neat things that happened in our parks is that, you know, we couldn't coordinate everybody's event, so people just started their own event. And Renaissance Park, we got a lovely email that said, "Love Your Park, Citywide Park Volunteer Month, the Renaissance Park neighborhood have organized volunteers for cleanup efforts at Renaissance Dog Park." So the Renaissance, Renaissance group took it upon themselves to organize their own cleanup simply because they saw what we were doing and they wanted to join the party. In addition to that, we're doing a great job continuing to serve our youth. You can see from the numbers in the upper, in the middle of the slide here that we went from 1,189 out-of-school time participants to over 1,400. That's close to a 300, 300-person increase. We have more programs than ever in after schools. We're also partnering with Propel ATL, and they're providing a biking program as part of our work together. So they come out to the different after-school sites and they provide, teach kids how to ride a bike, simple bike maintenance, and just rules of the road and safety. So there's a lot of great things happening with our partners. Also, our teen leaders continue to knock it out of the park, Nick Clark and the whole team. This year in November, they were awarded the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Outstanding Program Award for 2024. That's something we're really proud of, and they are as well. We had over 20 teen volunteers participate in the Turkey Giveaway along with 75 families. They did a coat drive, which had over 50 teams participate, and they won the Visionary Leadership Award from the Atlanta Police Foundation and the Service Provider of the Year Award for our work at the, at Promise Centers. Also, they had a teen ice cream social, and tomorrow they have a Black History Bowl, sorry, Black History Month Bowl at Pittman Park Recreation Center. So there's a lot going on and the teens are doing a phenomenal job. This right here is a spreadsheet that talks about all of the great work happening for our senior activities. We've increased participation year over year by over 17%. So we have more seniors participating at more locations across the city of Atlanta. We're up to 20 different locations. So if you're a senior and you want to participate in an activity, there's likely a space near you. And here, just to kind of break down the, from a matrix standpoint, is the different types of activities that we're providing across this space. So you see on this, you have wellness, you have jewelry making, card making, pickleball, basketball, cornhole activities, aerobics, arts and crafts, step classes, line dancing, a whole myriad of activities that are happening in all quadrants of our city. So we just wanted to share some data showing, you know, it's not just at one site or another site, but really it's citywide that we are serving our seniors and making sure that everybody has this, has this place close to their home. So they don't, they may not have transportation, they can take the bus, or they can work with a friend, they can take an Uber or a Lyft to get to the place, and we, we also provide transportation to some sites, using our vans and our buses to make sure that everybody can get to our primetime senior program. In addition to seniors, we also have a great athletic program and a great golf program. This winter, we have our TOT Basketball Program that serves ages three to four and our youth basketball program, five to 12. We have our Majorette Program as well as our youth basketball program. Oh, it was on the slide here twice. And then we also have our phenomenal golf program, and we've done a really good job of focusing on expanding programs. So this spring, we're offering, we have this event called Party, playing off the whole golf theme with the tees and the party and making sure that people understand that our golf courses are more than just golf courses. They're a place to build community, they're a place to have fun, they're a place to get to know your neighbor. And so we're really highlighting our golf programs. We do recognize that there are some downward trends here on basketball. We had some coaches that did not pass background checks. We also had a site that wasn't able to, to put together a team or didn't have the staff to put together a team. So we're working on addressing those gaps so that next year we can bring those, make sure that those sites have programs because we want, again, all people to participate. Some sites, in some cases, they didn't have full participation, they had nominal participation because we were able to get a couple of coaches, like at Adams Park and at South Bend, unfortunately, we weren't able to field a team, so the kids had to go to another site in order to have that, access to that service. And we continue to market our programs and connect people to what we have. Our racket centers, we formerly called these as tennis centers, but now we call them racket centers because we offer both pickleball and tennis. And at Bitsy Grant, we offer Padilla, which is another, which is kind of like a cross between tennis and pickleball as well. So we have multiple sports at Bitsy Grant. But here, what we're working on with Agape, that's, they've been at our places now for over a year. They continue to deliver free community events at Washington and Joseph McGee Park. And this year, well, again, we'll have our DPR Camp Best Friends Program, which will be summer, seven weeks of summer camp at Washington Park. We're also working with Agape in 2025 to provide after-school program at McGee and Washington and a new education through tennis partnership at Washington. We'll also have free cardio tennis at Washington Park, given, given our partnership with the Atlanta Beltline Partnership. And this year, we'll also be resurfacing the courts at Sharon Lester and Joseph McGee. Recently, we updated the courts at Washington, Chastain, and Bitsy Grant, all to improve play and experience of tennis and pickleballers. And this last year, I may, you may have remember back in 2023, I was up at this very dais talking about our tennis RFP and what we were going to do. And I'm happy to report that we were projecting roughly $250,000 in annual revenue, and this year, we surpassed that, bringing in over $314,000 in annual revenue. That's a rent of $25,000 per month and a 5% of gross receipt. So the city, we made a good financial decision here to work with an outside vendor. They provided over, as you can see from this slide, a lot of different activities and a lot of different lessons, over nine, close to 9,000 private lessons, over 10,000 unique users, and we support over 325 Alta teams and USTA teams. So tennis and racket centers do a phenomenal job meeting the needs of our community. And then we also have our Moving Atlanta Forward projects here. In addition to this, we, list of additional four projects that have closed out during this period from November to February, including Cabbage Town Park improvements, Garden Hill Fountain repairs, Oakland Cemetery repaving and mobility improvements, and the Tremont Play Lot replacement playground. So we continue to make some improvements. These are some examples of great projects. This bridge and the stairs here at Morningside Nature Preserve, the original bridge had washed out. This bridge, I don't think is going anywhere. So we're excited to have a more permanent bridge that provides accessibility to the, to the outdoor paths. In addition to that, I know Councilmember Westmoren, you specifically asked for this, making sure that our outdoor pools are of high quality, and so we are replastering all of our outdoor pools in preparation for the summer. We're also repairing several fences that were creating safety issues, like at Mosley Park, to make sure that everybody both has a safe opportunity at our pools and has a clean and safe plaster surface. So, you know, no more cutting your feet on our pools, which is really important, that we're replastering and sanding it to make sure it's a good surface. So because of the Moving Atlanta Forward bond dollars and the pool investment, we're going to have some great looking pools this summer and really looking forward to this spring and May 31st when our pools open up. In addition to that, we've been actively recruiting a new GIS manager to help support our use of data and technology and decision-making. We've hired a new social media support to help get the word out. You may recall in Activate ATL, one of the challenges that we faced was getting the word out about our great programs and activities. So Sarah Jane has come on board and she's done a great job helping, one, helping us get to 10,000 followers, but also helping us to promote our programs. We also have, we replaced the CT Martin HVAC system and improved the indoor fitness facilities at Washington Aquatic Facility. And as you can see here, we also have these beautiful new park ranger trucks that are now patrolling our parks. We have over eight park rangers currently hired that are patrolling our parks. They also have e-bikes to get out on the trails and back paths to make, not just stay in their truck, but to get out and see all parts of our park because we do know that we have some parts of our park that you can't patrol by vehicle. And this is an important investment that we're making to keep our parks and recreation centers safe. In addition to that, our park operations team has been doing a phenomenal job. Recently, they implemented a park improvement initiative, and this is something I'm really proud about. Our parks maintenance team has come together and our park leadership team challenged the park maintenance team to come up with ways of improving every week. So every park group, you know, two to three staff, every crew is identifying one project in one of their parks that they're going to accomplish that week, be it painting a bench, replacing a bench, adding some new flowers, enhancing a specific area, maybe doing a little extra weed eating or tree trimming, and they're doing a phenomenal job just elevating the aesthetics and the accessibility of our parks. We've also launched a Certified Landscape Professional Course. This is the first of its type for the city of Atlanta where we're offering 10 park workers an opportunity to get their Certified Landscape Professional through the University of Georgia. And we're also replacing over 20 park ID signs. This was in-house fabrication and installation of these signs was implemented through an internal apprenticeship program where we're teaching people how to use the new routers and how to get those signs out successfully. And so you may have seen new signs in many of our parks, these are wood routed signs. We also improved our community outreach with maintenance collaborations with friends and conservancy groups. So again, we're setting the expectation that our district managers need to know their friends and neighbors and the conservancies, and so they're working collaboratively to And so they're working collaboratively to identify projects and make minor improvements to enhance the health and safety of our parks. And we also cleared over a thousand back, uh, work orders that were on back order. This came about through the completion of these work orders. We did a three-month assessment, just looking at, you know, what has been submitted and really auditing them. Did we complete the work? Did we, do we need this work order anymore? So we were able to clear out over a thousand back order, backlog work orders, which really now helps us move forward with the implementation of the new three-one-one system, which we used as a work order system. Last but not least, we're currently hiring. So if you know anybody that's looking for a summer job or even a permanent job, we have permanent jobs in our parks and our recreation side as well as in our development, design and development team. So please consider, please encourage those that you know to apply. Also, we're looking for summer lifeguards, summer camp counselors and summer park maintenance workers. So our next hiring event is on Saturday, May, March eighth. So please encourage those to follow our social media and come out to our hiring events. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cutler. Start getting some councilmembers queued up here. We'll start with Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Just a quick comment more than a question. Back on slide fourteen, you mentioned the pools. We spend a lot of time rightly raising flags about Moving Atlanta Forward dollars and making sure that they're getting out the door. And so it's, I want to also raise a flag in instances where we are doing that. And it's great to see what's happening here at all of our outdoor pools. And it's also cool to see it build on the work that we did with Council President, I mean, Councilmember Overstreet back in two thousand twenty about making our pools free. So super excited to watch Memorial Day come around this year and continue to see these two things moving together. So, thank you.
Thank you. And in addition to that, we are offering summer lunch as part of our pool program. That way, we recognize that kids both get a swim in and they get a lunch while they're at that pool site.
Thank you, Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of questions. Well, actually, first, a comment. No, it's, it's, it's actually a question. Listen, I need to go back to school. I know a couple of years ago, I had introduced your team to some folks with the Atlanta United Community Foundation. And they were doing some active outreach to communities across the state to do soccer pitch, build outs, footsaw court build outs. With the World Cup coming next year, I'm, you know, opportunities to expand the game in more of our parts of our city, particularly those that don't always have access to soccer resources. I know we partner with Soccer to Streets and those folks are doing a great job working with, with Marta, with Station Soccer. But I do want to let you and your team know that there is another grant opportunity available through the Atlanta United Community Foundation. I believe that grant closes in April or May. Projects up to a hundred thousand dollars in, in matching funds. I think there's a local match requirement. I'm happy to work with your team. If y'all identify a park in our, in my district, I'm happy to lean on Moving Atlanta Forward dollars. We'll love to see expansion of soccer programming in my district. And I think that's a great way to make that happen. So I wanted to put that on your radar.
Yeah, I know. Please send us the information. And we just, we brought on a soccer professional to help establish Atlanta, City of Atlanta's first soccer program. This summer at Collier, we'll be having a soccer summer camp in partnership with Atlanta United. And so, yes, we're looking to do more soccer, more places, especially, specifically in District Four and across the city. Because we recognize that not everybody has access to soccer programming.
Awesome. And I'll also make sure to send you that information that I have on the, the grant opportunity.
Perfect. Thank you.
The next thing I want to add, my next District Four Town Hall is coming up this Saturday. I know I ask about it every meeting, but just so I have the latest and greatest, if you or Mr. His can share with me the updates on both James Orange Park. The construction timeline, demolition timeline, programming changes, that sort of thing. And then separately, Winter Street Park with the Moving Atlanta Forward dollars we're putting towards that, what that construction timeline is looking like at this point. So I'm at the latest and greatest to present this weekend. My next question or comment, it's a comment. I know myself and Councilmember Winston and some other folk, I feel like every time I go to one of these TOT Basketball Games, see all these VIPs from across the city. I saw Amy Fong with Atlanta Hawks at the game last week. Commissioner Davis with Dean, Louis Nae Grom, one of my constituents who is the president for Hundred Black Men of Atlanta. So a lot of folks are taking advantage of that program, sending their young kids into the program. My daughter surprisingly has taken to it and loves her coaches and loves participating in it. Just as a parent of a four and a half year old and a fifteen month old. The seven o'clock game times, seven-thirty game times, we had a seven-thirty last week, aren't exactly the most young parent friendly game times. I know last year, we had more five o'clock, five-thirty games during different locations across the city. You know, nothing against my colleague, Councilmember Boone, but going to CT Martin on a Friday night every week isn't the easiest way to get my kids out the house. And these are concerns that other parents have shared with me, just the, the late times. And I imagine some operational constraints that y'all are probably running into. I know you shared with some of the staffing issues. And also the availability to certain coaches in certain locations, that sort of thing. But I just wanted to elevate that to your attention, especially, actually now granted, my oldest will age out of the TOT program for next season. But just think of us young parents that are trying to get kids to a basketball game when we hopefully are putting them down to bed. So just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I know. Thank you for that comment.
And then my last question, if I can remember it. I don't remember it, so I'm gonna just leave it there. So thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, feel free to call me anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? One thing I wanted to add, Commissioner Cutler and I, obviously, we've had a conversation about some of the challenges with the TOTS program. My daughter is also playing in that program and it has been difficult to be able to get, you know, a four-year-old to seven-thirty games that are almost thirty minutes away. So I know you and I talked about maybe convening a group to kind of just talk about some of the challenges. I've, I've mentioned that there's been issues with the reservation, reservation system and, and the picking days of the week that you'd, you'd wanna play games or sign up for different leagues. Just some of the communication that's been going on with parents. I, I will like to just point out that I think the coaches that we have are doing a remarkable job. And a lot of this doesn't fall on them. It's, it's more of the system in place is making it a little difficult for them. Also hear you on the staffing challenges that, that you have. And I think it'll be great for, especially Councilmember Dozier and I, sort of last year, we were secret shoppers. This year, we kind of were out front a little bit about, you know, having our kids in the leagues, just so we could, you know, be more vocal about some of the challenges that we were, we were experiencing. So we'd definitely like to make sure that we work on that. I mentioned to you, especially at the three to four range, or age range, this is a lot of times parents' first experience dealing with parks and recreation. So we get that first and sometimes last opportunity to make a good impression. And I think it's important that we, we put our best foot forward, especially at that age, at that age range for parents to be able to see that this is something that we can continue doing for years. And so definitely want to do what I can to help make sure that we're, we're doing all we can to make, make this program work. So wanted to add that. Secondly, I know you're getting ready, you got a new social media person, you know, you're doing a lot more outreach. One of the things I think will be helpful to add to that is the reservation systems. I think one of the challenges that I've been seeing, and it's a good challenge, is that, you know, our parks are looking cleaner. There's, there's more people out enjoying them, but I'm also seeing where there's been friction with reservations. People who are, who know how to make reservations are making reservations, but sometimes people are already set up, family reunions, people are having a good time. And then shows, somebody shows up with a piece of paper and says, this is my pavilion. And so I've seen some, some, some friction because of that. So I think we just should make sure we're doing a great job of letting folks know how our reservation system works and encouraging that. And, and making sure that, you know, everyone that, that needs to make a reservation depending on what they're doing knows how to do that.
Yeah, definitely. We can definitely promote that. And I think also, I, I think last summer, we had just a kind of a coupon that we handed out at a lot of picnic shelters. Because if it's not reserved in this specific timeframe, you know, we encourage people to reserve the shelters as, as much as in advance as possible. But if it's not reserved in a certain timeframe, then it does become first come, first served. And so that's where you get kind of that, some people are used to just doing it first come, first served. But now that there's more people in Atlanta, people are reserving, going online and reserving them more. So yeah, we can be cognizant of that and get that word out.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, one, one more question for you. Well, we'll start the question with a comment. The matrix that you have of all the senior activities, I think that's a great document. I would love to see something similar for youth activities. I'm curious to see what activities are available at what locations in this format. I think, you know, I'm a visual learner, so this is very helpful for me to internalize that. Separately, I saw on one of the slides, you had made allusions to a guitar program and a music program. And one thing I've, I've said for a long time is I know, you know, kids don't always want to play basketball or football. We have to find other ways to engage them in our systems, in our, in our city, in our recreation centers. And I think y'all leaning into that is, is phenomenal. I'm curious where those, what sites those are located at. As, as a person who has dabbled in guitar over the years, I want to see if, maybe I can get in on a jam session with some of the kids out there. But curious where y'all are doing that, those classes.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, please just let me know. We'll get, we'll get a matrix put together. You know, I believe most of our, we, we try to put most of our music programs at either Percerson or at South Bend, which are two kind of music oriented locations. I know that we have a, a program with the Atlanta Musical, Atlanta Musical Group at, at Percerson and I think similarly at South Bend. And so that's where attended our music program. But what we found is that sometimes our challenge is we may have one or two programs per week at each of the sites, but at minimum, we at least have one vendor at each of our after school sites. Because what happens is the kids get off at a certain time, they come to the site, we give them snack, a little bit of time for homework, then they have time for a vendor. And then oftentimes, kids are being picked up, you know, they're being picked up between that five and six-thirty timeframe. And so it's challenging to have multiple vendors at multiple locations. So we tend to rotate people. So we can get, we can break, break it down and have a matrix.
Thank you. And just to close, just want to reiterate, my colleague, Councilmember Winston. It's, I think it's very clear that we both want to continue to engage with Department of Parks and Recreation. My, my daughter loves the program. She's taken advantage of so far. Unfortunately, I think she's gonna be too young to participate in the summer camp program. She turns five in August, so she won't be able to do that this year. But just know that, please lean on us as a resource. And I know the secret's out the bag, the cat's out the bag, so it's not so much a secret software situation anymore. But happy to provide real-time feedback as to what's going on and, and help, help the, the department do better for parents across the city. But we, we've really appreciated the work y'all have done so far.
Yeah, I'd like to propose that the three of us get together. I'd like to include some of my staff to hear that feedback. And if there's other parent participants that, that you have, that you know have concerns, we can get together and talk about that. Because that'd be helpful for the staff to hear the feedback and for there to be a kind of a iterative conversations. Because I know there are some contributing factors. You know, we have practices Monday through Thursday. Friday is really kind of that vacant day, right? Friday, that Friday evening timeframe. Saturday from like nine AM until five PM, we have youth basketball happening. So we want to provide this top program. So unfortunately, Friday night is kind of that niche time, given the staff that we have and then the, the large amount of basketball that we have on Saturdays. So we, we can look at that, like, how can we improve, like you said, communication, possible timing and where, where it occurs. But those are the constraints that we have related to the programs.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Councilmember Blackdare.
Hey, Commissioner, thank you for the presentation. I actually have a niche question since my, my colleagues have done a great job of asking all the others. My quick question was, with the federal, with what we're seeing with federal grants and funding, and we know that a lot of our smaller nonprofits are gonna fall off. My niche question is very much these, some of our nonprofits that are operating like in my district out of a rec center and that provide pre-summer camp that are helping more than eighty-five kids now, things of that nature, and are losing out on federal funding, but are doing things like helping us maintain our rec center, doing repairs, putting their own money into improving that space for the kids. And my nonprofits that are, you know, that are falling short, that actually do a lot of work with parks, will there be an opportunity to find new ways to support them? I mean, getting innovative things that we haven't done before to, and I know that's not entirely like, it's not typical and it's not fully our responsibility. But is there any way that we'd be able to assist some of those nonprofits or think of ideas in which to support them so that we don't lose that programming for those kids?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest ways that we're gonna support both of those sites at Lang Carson and at Brownwood Park is by rehabbing the buildings, right? So they don't have those maintenance issues going forward. So Keith, who's behind me, I know that we're kicking off a project this spring. I think we're actively repairing the roof at Lang Carson, but at Brownwood, I know we're working to repair the building shell and just make some improvements there. So hopefully the nonprofits won't have to put out that outlay on an ongoing basis. So they'll be able to put more dollars towards programming. I know that the mayor has a Year of the Youth program and there's grants through the mayor's office related to youth serving organizations. We don't have any youth serving grants at this point, but that's because we tend to focus our grant making with Park Pride on parks. But it's something that we could explore, but at this time, we don't have those financial resources. We're directly giving it, unless they're a vendor, providing it to a service at one of our recreation centers for our out-of-school time program. I know that they are, our rec centers are just a different, different model.
Understood. I'm, I'm sure we'll keep the conversation going. You're always open to ideas. So appreciate it. Thank you.
But I will say if there, oftentimes, we provide letters of support. So if there's any grants that they're applying for, we're happy to provide at minimum a letter of support, just to encourage people to make those contributions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from colleagues, CNN?
Oh, I did, seeing Councilmember Bond, I did want to give you an update. We have the LDP permit for the Vietnam Memorial. And we're working to schedule that groundbreaking out at Piedmont Park to celebrate the groundbreaking.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. So is there any, I know we wanted to try to identify the end of March near the national anniversaries. Are we still on pace for that?
Yeah, we're actively reaching out to the, to the community group to identify a date that's suitable to them and we'll follow their lead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cutler. So this does conclude our presentation section of our agenda. So that takes us to, well, we've already completed communications, so that takes us to items for first reading.
Item number two, twenty-five oh eleven seventeen, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee waiving the requirements of section two dash nine-ten of the Atlanta City Code to retroactively authorize and ratify the City of Atlanta's submission of a grant application for the Liverpool Centers Initiative Study Grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars and zero cents in order to conduct a LCI study at the Ashby Marta Station Transit Area and for other purposes. That takes us to ordinance this for a second reading. If there is no objection from the committee, we can take items three through thirteen as a block.
CNN.
Twenty-five oh ten sixty-five, CDP twenty-four zero twenty-nine, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the two thousand twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at three eighty-five, three ninety-one, four oh one, four oh three and four eleven Lindsay Street Northwest from the single-family residential and three eighty-nine Lindsay Street Northwest, three eighty, three eighty-eight, three ninety-two, three ninety-six, four oh four, four oh six and four sixteen Oliver Street Northwest from the low-density residential land use designation to the medium-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten sixty-six, CDP twenty-four oh thirty, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the two thousand twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at three eighty-three, three eighty-seven, three ninety-five and three ninety-nine Paines Avenue Northwest and three eighty and three eighty-four Andrew J. Hairston Place and eight twenty-five Proctor Street Northwest from the single-family residential to the medium-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten sixty-seven, CDP twenty-four zero thirty-one, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the two thousand twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at twenty-two twenty Bernard Road Northwest parcel ID listed, also known as twenty-two twenty-six, twenty-two thirty, twenty-two thirty-four, twenty-two thirty-eight, twenty-two forty-two and twenty-two forty-six Bernard Road Northwest from the industrial land use designation to the single-family residential land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten sixty-eight, CDP twenty-four zero thirty-two, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the two thousand twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at fifteen seventy-five, fifty seventy-five rear fifteen eighty-one, fifteen ninety and fifteen ninety-three Huber Street Northwest from the industrial land use designation to the very high-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten sixty-nine, CDP twenty-four zero thirty-three, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the two thousand twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at two forty-three Skakel Terrace Northwest from the single-family residential to the low-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten seventy, CDP twenty-four zero Twenty-five oh ten seventy, CDP twenty-four zero thirty-four, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the twenty-twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at seven-twenty-eight Monroe Drive Northeast from the low-density commercial land use designation to the mixed-use medium-density land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten seventy-one, CDP twenty-four zero thirty-five, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the twenty-twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at seven-fifty-seven Pierce Street Southwest from the single-family residential land use designation to the low-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten seventy-two, CDP twenty-five zero zero two, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the twenty-twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as, so as to redesignate property located at twelve-fifteen, thirteen-thirteen Sylvan Road Southwest, nine-eighty-four, nine-eighty-five, and nine-ninety-seven Cox Avenue from the industrial land use designation to the mixed-use high-density land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten seventy-three, CDP twenty-five zero zero three, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the twenty-twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at twenty-one-thirty-one, twenty-one-thirty-five, twenty-one-thirty-nine, and twenty-one-forty-five Donald Lee Halliwell Parkway Northwest from the single-family residential land use designation to the medium-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten seventy-four, CDP twenty-five zero zero four, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the twenty-twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at three-eighty-three Lanier Street Northwest from the high-density residential zero dash sixteen units per acre land use designation to the high-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh ten seventy-five, CDP twenty-five zero zero five, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the twenty-twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at five-thirty-three Griffin Street Northwest from the single-family residential land use designation to the mixed-use low-density land use designation and for other purposes. All of these items will be held for the upcoming March tenth CDP public hearing.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to hold these items for the CDP hearing. I would second by Backyard. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. These items will be held. That takes us to item number fourteen, twenty-five oh ten eighty-three, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee or the chief procurement officer or her designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to acquire from the Conservation Fund a parcel of land comprised of approximately zero point nineteen acres, more or less a real property located at thirteen-eighty-five Galt Street Southeast, Atlanta three zero three one five Fulton County Tax Parcel ID Number Listed for the expansion of the City of Atlanta Park commonly and currently known as Cho's Wood Park for a total purchase price not to exceed two hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and forty-eight cents. Authorizing the mayor or his designee or the chief procurement officer on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute all documents necessary to acquire the property, authorizing acquisition, due diligence, closing costs, signage, demolition, site stabilization, and other site development costs to be paid from the Park Impact Fee South Account, amended the twenty-twenty-five General Government Capital Outlay Fund Budget in the Department of Parks and Recreation and Department of Finance, Park South Service District by transferring to and from the various accounts listed waiving section two dash fifteen forty-one D of Article Ten of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City Code of Ordinances and for Other Purposes.
Thank you. Uh, do we have anyone from Parks and Recs? Uh, Deputy Director Hicks?
Hello? Councilmembers?
Good to be here with you today.
I'm here to, uh, present to you the ordinance to expand Cho's Wood Park. Through the acquisition of, uh, point two acres, uh, parcel at thirteen-eighty-five Galt Street. What this does is provides access to the park from the east side of, of the park and the neighborhood, and presently does not have that access at the moment. Um, this expansion aligns with the city's commitment to increasing green space and enhancing, uh, community recreation areas. The city will purchase the, uh, property from the Conservation Fund, uh, for two hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, funding will come entirely from the Park Impact Fee South Account. Uh, the benefits to the, uh, community are several. Uh, number one, it expands the existing well-used park, increasing green space for the neighborhood. Secondly, uh, it supports community-driven initiatives for recreation trails and outdoor activities. And then it also enhances the quality of life for residents by preserving land for future generations. Once acquired, the land will be permanently, uh, designated as a park area. Uh, this investment reflects the city's priority to create accessible, well-maintained public parks. I ask for your support in approving this, uh, ordinance, uh, not only to benefit the residents of southeast Atlanta, but all citizens that visit Cho's Wood Park.
Thank you. Um, y'all just add that really excited about this. This was a dilapidated home that was adjacent to the Cho's Wood Park. Um, if you haven't been there, beautiful new playground that is there, uh, lots of development happening. And so this will be a unique opportunity to be able to expand the interest to the park. Um, so really excited about that. Um, and I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second by Councilmember Dozier. Can please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number fifteen, twenty-five oh ten eighty-four, an ordinance by Community Development Human Service Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute a quitclaim deed conveying the city's interest in property located at thirteen forty-seven Graymont Drive Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia three zero three one zero, Fulton County Tax Parcel ID Listed in an amount not to exceed one dollar and zero cents to the Fulton County City of Atlanta Land Bank Authority doing business as Metro Atlanta Land Bank for the public purpose of returning the property to an effective utilization status in order to provide permanently affordable housing in the Venetian Hills neighborhood and for other purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Cosby?
Hi Chair Winston, committee members. Thanks so much for the chance to speak about this issue. My name is Stephen Cosby, Director of the Office of Housing and Community Development within the city's Department of City Planning. Um, this parcel of land, uh, at thirteen forty-seven Graymont Drive, uh, represents a great opportunity that we have to, um, continue to be a part of the great work of Metro Atlanta Land Bank and other partners in continuing to build affordable housing, um, especially in the Venetian Hills neighborhood where existing efforts are, um, already ongoing through the land bank and through Atlanta, Atlanta Land Trust and other partners. Um, the Department of City Planning is not in the business of acquiring and holding land, as you might guess. Um, and so we are eager to work with partners in the community who can, uh, return this to productive use and, uh, and address this challenge in our community.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from colleagues? Councilmember Dozier?
Thanks, Stephen. Just want to say thank y'all for pursuing this. Uh, Graymont Drive is one of my favorite streets in my district. I don't tell the rest of my constituents I said that, but, uh, they have a very active, uh, neighborhood group, a block association, and, um, uh, whoever gets to live in that future home is gonna enjoy living in that community. So I just appreciate y'all pursuing this and, uh, move, approve.
Second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number sixteen, twenty-five oh ten eighty-five, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to enter into a First Amendment to Lease Agreement to modify the lease agreement dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, inserted into by the City of Atlanta in Newport two thirty-five Mitchell Street LP to recognize the change of ownership and name change of the landlord by deleting the name Newport two thirty-five Mitchell Street LP as landlord and inserting Soto two thirty-five Mitchell Street LLC to extend the term of the lease for one additional period of one year to, to delete in its entirety and replace sections twelve, thirteen, thirty, forty-one, and forty-nine and for other purposes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Cheryl Glenn Snooks. I'm the Director of Real Estate, uh, for the Department of Enterprise Assets Management. And this legislation before you is to enter, uh, to seek authorization to enter into a First Amendment. The property was sold and now it's under new own, ownership. And we also wanted to extend the term for additional one year and to clean up some of the language that was in the lease agreement. Um, and those sections were sections twelve, thirteen, twenty, forty-one, and forty-nine.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from colleagues? A motion to approve by Councilmember Westmoreland. Second by Backyard. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. This item is favorable. And just for clarification, it replaced sections twelve, thirteen, twenty, forty-one, and forty-nine. I said thirty originally. That takes us to item number seventeen, twenty-five oh ten ninety-nine, an ordinance by Councilmembers Michael Julian Bond and Byron Amis to establish a program for assistance with tree removal and pruning for eligible senior citizens, homeowners in the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
A motion to hold by Councilmember Bond. Second by Westmoreland. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. This item is held. That takes us to item eight.
Mr. Bond?
I just wanted to speak to my vote. I made the motion to hold because some of the items are being addressed. And the Tree Protection Ordinance is already making its rounds, uh, through the NPUs. And so we, we're gonna attempt to try to reconcile both papers by the time the Tree Protection Ordinance comes back.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Bond.
That takes us to item eighteen, twenty-five oh eleven oh five, an ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Caruover Street to waive Chapter Two, Article Nine, Division One, Section Two Dash Nine Ten, to authorize the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment Services to apply for and to accept a Southern Cities Economic Inclusion Initiative Grant from the National League of Cities in amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars and zero cents for the purposes of supporting southern municipalities and developing strategies to increase economic prosperity for local residents and businesses. To amend the FY twenty-twenty-five budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations, the grant funds provided by the National League of Cities in amount of fifteen thousand dollars and zero cents, all grant funds shall be deposited into the accounts numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Thank you. Um, have Ms. Austin Gibbons here? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, council. Coming before you today to recruit, uh, request for us, Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment Services to apply and accept a grant not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for, from the National League of Cities for, um, this grant. And it's basically to work with individuals within our peer groups to understand strategies that can assist municipalities when it comes to assisting individual residents and constituents on workforce development programs. So our goal, as you can see, you all have talked a lot about today, the federal government and how, uh, some of the funding is being, uh, not sent to certain agencies. And we want to make sure that we're getting ahead of some of this to apply for additional grants outside of our federal grants.
All right. Um, any questions, comments? A motion to approve by Westmoreland. A second by Backyard. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That takes us to resolutions. Twenty-five R thirty-one fifty-five, a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate a total amount not to exceed seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents to twenty-four-seven Gateway LLC pursuant to section six dash three zero six of the City of Atlanta's Charter to support coordinated shelter and supportive services for individuals experiencing chronic homelessness in the City of Atlanta, authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into a, a donation agreement which shall detail the actions of twenty-four-seven Gateway LLC to support coordinated shelter and supportive services for individuals experiencing chronic homelessness in the City of Atlanta, to authorize the chief financial officer or his designee to make the donation authorized hereby from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Ms. Ellison?
Yeah, so, um, this would be another donation that we are making to the Gateway, um, Center. And we are requesting this because Gateway is the only low-barrier shelter in the city. Um, and as we can see riding around that we need, um, this, this to continue to operate. Um, so they were originally funded through the twenty-seventeen Homelessness Fund, and then following that, some ARPA funding. Um, and then we have a set aside in the Housing Trust Fund for homelessness. So we just want to continue operations and not have any gaps in services. We are gonna work with them to, um, come up with a more sustainable, um, solution for funding.
Questions from colleagues? Councilmember Backyard?
Thank you. Um, do we know how this money is going to be utilized?
It's just for operating, operating costs, but I could get you a breakdown from Gateway if you.
Do we have a breakdown of that cost?
I don't have the breakdown right now.
Would you mind sending it to the members of CDHS once you do? Um, my question also, as you said, with dollars in the Housing Trust Fund, how much money will that be?
The set aside was for three million.
And this will, so Georgia Works will be moving out of the second floor of Gateway relatively soon to move into their new headquarters on Auburn Avenue. They've made up the second floor. Are there plans on utilizing that space?
I don't know of any plans to utilize the second space just yet.
The second floor of?
I mean, the second floor.
Would you mind finding out if that would be the case? Thank you. And you said this was the city's only low-barrier shelter?
Yes.
Okay, I was just asking for clarification because in the presentation we received in, received in CDHS last, uh, week before last, there was comments that we had multiple low-barrier shelters. So I just wanted to clarify that we only have one. Okay, thank you.
To my knowledge.
To your knowledge. I'll double check as well, but, um, thank you for this. And I, uh, move to approve.
Now, motion to approve, it was, uh, second by Councilmember Bond. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number twenty, twenty-five R thirty-one sixty, a resolution by Councilmember Jason H. Winston authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into the contract number listed, pools and splash pad maintenance services with Stan Guard Aquatics on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation in, in an amount not to exceed two million dollars and zero cents annually and for other purposes. This item will need to be held for the ARPA report.
Motion to hold by Westmoreland. I'll second by Backyard. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. This item is held. That takes us to. That takes us to item number twenty-one, twenty-five R thirty-two oh three. A resolution by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute the First Amendment to the agreement number listed, chartered bus transportation services with A National Limousine Service and agreement number listed chartered bus transportation services with MTI Limo and Shuttle Services on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation to add funding in an amount not to exceed five hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of council, Minister Chair, Doug Boss, Department of Parks. Um, as stated, this is a resolution of, as an amendment, uh, to add funding to a current contract. We have two vendors on the contract, A National and MTI Limousine Services. Both vendors have performed satisfactor, uh, satisfactorily, um, in the past year. This will add funding for the two twenty, uh, twenty-five season. Um, we use this air-conditioned chartered transportation for all of our campus friends. We use it for all of our senior programs, all of our athletic programs. It's been a good contract for us, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Got a motion to approve, what's that, by Wes Morland? Second by back there, if you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. This item is favorable. That concludes our legislative items.
Thank you. Uh, any parting words, comments? District four, uh, sorry, Ms. Lavendere?
Yes, I'm sorry. We wanted to have a item come off held for, for a vote. I'm sorry. It's, uh, number twenty-five, CDP twenty-four zero zero six?
Number twenty-five?
Yeah, did you already vote on it? I'm sorry, I didn't. I, I believe the zoning, companion zoning was voted on. One second.
All right, one second, let's, we'll figure it out. You said it was item number twenty-five, what was the ordinance number?
Twenty-four oh one two five four.
We're checking with zoning at the moment.
Yes. So it's Z twenty-four zero zero nine.
We, Mr. Chair, we moved this paper yesterday. So item number... We'll take up that item.
Okay, yes. Item number twenty-five, twenty-four oh twelve fifty-four, CDP twenty-four zero zero six. An ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the twenty-twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at nine thirty-four and nine seventy-two Avon Avenue Southwest and twelve forty-four Higgins Street Southwest from the industrial land use designation to the mixed-use high-density land use designation and for other purposes.
A motion to approve by Wes Morland. Second by back there, if you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. This item is favorable.
This concludes our legislative items. Um, assuming we'll get a District Four Town Hall plug from Councilmember Dozier?
Don't ruin it for the people, Mr. Chair. Colleagues and, uh, our adoring fans watching from home. I just reminded our next District Four Town Hall will be this Saturday, March the first at eleven o'clock AM. It'll be at Plywood Place over at the Leon White Complex. Hope to see you there.
Councilmember Back there?
Thank you. Just a short announcement, I just want to wish my partner Sarah a happy birthday tomorrow. So, at the ripe old age of thirty-one. So, thank you and a happy birthday, Sarah.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from colleagues? See you none, we are adjourned.